Well, we'll struggle on here. I'll call immediately, please, and ask for the calling of the roll.
Thank you. Mayor Edie.
Present.
Reeve Even.
Present.
Counselor Coolus.
Present.
Counselor Evans.
Present.
Counselor Hines.
Present.
Counselor Jamison.
Present.
Counselor Sidney.
Is there any declaration of particular interest in general nature thereof? Okay, hearing none. Okay, first motion, that the regular minutes of council from April twenty eighth, twenty twenty be adopted as printed. Move her please.
Erle.
Counselor Jamison, second by Counselor Hines. Any questions or comments on the minutes? Okay, hearing none, all in favor. Carrie. Okay, that the communication from Minister of Transport, Transportation Carolyn Nodroni dated May the sixth, twenty twenty, concerning the twenty 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 dash twenty one connecting link program funding be awarded to the town of Rentford be received. Move her please. Counselor Hines, second by Counselor Sidney. Maybe we'd ask Director Askin to give us a short report on how this project is going to go.
Hey, thank you very much. Obviously, the the town is extremely pleased to have been awarded funding under the MTO connecting link program. So this project is from Stewart Street, from the bridge to the northerly town limit, and the total project cost is five million, five hundred and sixty thousand dollars. And we do receive three million dollars from the province of Ontario through the connecting link program. So we have discussed that this project is has been designed through the entire length and will go to tender in about two weeks' time. And and that's consistent with the message of this letter is that we're now to proceed without delay. And and the project, the MTO will will come up with contribution agreements and and those will flow through council when we do get them. The project does include some underground work in the in the form of sanitary sewer improvements that will serve as growth in the McAndrew and Mason area. So it's sort of setting the municipality up for future development in in that area. Generally, it's a great program. The road obviously is in very much need of improvement, and it's a great time to to get at it. Contractors are excited to to submit bids on this one.
Any questions or comments? Counselor Jamison.
Um, okay, so do you know how long like, do you know, do you have an idea when this is going to start?
Uh, so the the project will go to tender and be awarded sort of probably in the July, mid-July timeframe. And construction will begin probably within a couple of weeks of that. So the the intent is to do as much work as possible in two thousand twenty and to to continue, maybe even underground works will continue late into the fall. And and then work will continue next year. And so it's a two-year project. We have to be completed by December two thousand twenty one.
Okay, and then the second part of that is like, does this include the feeder streets or just Stewart Street?
Uh, just Stewart Street, and the most significant kind of changes to the project are the construction of a multi-use trail that runs all the way along the west side of the street from the bridge up to Mason Avenue. And the total reconstruction of Brew Street intersection with full widening of lanes to allow proper truck movements there. Yeah, so that's the nature. No, no connecting streets at this point.
Okay, good.
Eddie, any other questions or comments? Oh, it's that's pretty good news. Thank you very much. Okay, all in favor. Carrie. That the communication from the District of Perry Sound dated April twenty ninth, twenty twenty, concerning high-speed internet connectivity connect diversity in rural Ontario be received and endorsed. Move her please. Reeve Emo, second by Counselor Coolus. Again, any questions or comments on this? Hearing none, all in favor. Reeve Emo, did you have a question?
Uh, no, just to comment, it's, uh, you know, even with the the EORN project of eight years ago and with the upgrade they're planning on with the new project, that still would leave our our community suffering because of the because of the volume of of the volume of activities that's being that's being forced on the system right now. And so, you know, I I think both governments have said they want to do something. However, the reality is, it's probably eighteen to twenty-four months away before they do something, simply because by the time you design a network, source it out, and then and then RFP and contract and build, you're usually eighteen to twenty-four months. So I think this is a great motion, but I I hope that we keep an eye on it and and periodically push them to move faster.
Any other questions or comments? One more time, all in favor. Carrie, thank you. Twenty twenty concerning the extension of draft approval for the Hunter Gate subdivision phase four be received. Affirm that Rentford Town Council support the extension of draft approval by the County of Rentford for property identified as paragraph ten, lots ten and eleven concession three, town of Rentford for the draft plan of subdivision known as Hunter Gate subdivision phase four, having county file number four seventeen nine two zero zero two and town file number D dash twelve dash zero zero zero. Move her please. Counselor Hines, second by. Reeve Emo, what the planner withers, so maybe give us a short report on this, please.
Thank you, Mayor Edie. I'd be glad to, and yeah, so this is a pretty standard report. We saw one of these a year ago today from 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 this request, and it needs to be an annual thing until the until phase four is completed. The initial draft approval is always for a minimum of three years, and the county usually doesn't go longer than that. And then they will only grant one-year extensions after that. So it's just a it's just an annual thing. The a request letter is is provided to the county from the developer. And then the county asks the town whether town council, whether it supports the extension. So the the alternative is that the subdivision lapses. So June seventh of this year, it will it will lapse. And what that means is that they will have to then go back and get draft plan approval again. So they have to file a whole new subdivision application for anything that's not registered. So we're staff recommending that that this be approved. We have no concerns about it with it from a policy perspective. It's the developer is continuing to move forward at the at the rate that the units are and lots are absorbed. There is ongoing construction activity. So we are, we are recommending that that the the extension be granted. The and if you're if if any member of council is curious, appendix A of the report, it shows the whole draft plan of subdivision, okay? And then appendix C, which in the agenda packages before appendix B, my apologies, but appendix C shows what's been registered to date. So that's what's being built on. So it's the remaining portion of of appendix A that is a subject of this, the subject of this draft approval extension. So the conditions continue to be applicable. They're pretty standard conditions. Anything that pertains to the phase that's already been registered will just be cleared. And we're we're happy to recommend that this be approved.
Okay, any questions or comments on this? Counselor Hines.
To the planner, this extension goes, this extension goes to June of twenty twenty one?
Through you, Mayor Edie. Yes, so the county, even if they were to grant an extension today, they would grant it to June seventh of next year. That's how they did it last year. Yeah, so it would be the June seventh, twenty twenty one. Yeah, that's correct.
Thank you.
Any other comments? I'm going to ask two questions now. I don't see everybody on the screen sometimes, so I'll ask the question in favor. See your hands, fine. But also ask the question opposed, and if you are opposed, please say opposed. All in favor. Opposed. Carrie, thank you. Okay, the planner withers report dated May the seventh, twenty twenty, concerning the application for site plan approval for one eighteen Ryden Street North and eleven Bridge Street, Patrick Mills be received. Move her please. Counselor Hines, second by Counselor Jamison. Now call on Planner Withers to give us another report.
Thank you, Mayor Edie, and through you. So this 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 redevelopment of the Emblois property has been going on for some time, as council be aware. And Mr. Mills has been been working diligently at cleaning up the property. And he is moving forward through the development approvals that are required for the property. So right now he needs to get an approved site plan. And that will enable him to enter into this agreement, deposit required securities and get a building permit so he can start on the the actual remodel of the main building. So this this report is for the for the site plan agreement, so we're looking for council's authorization to enter into an agreement with Mr. Mills, his corporation. Once he has his his drawings are are finalized, and I feel like we're pretty close to that. And so that's the again, this is just for the agreement. The I think one of the unique things to note about this is that there is an encroaching section on the rear, kind of the rear portion of the main building. It's the smaller, it kind of tapers down and it encroaches on the Argyle Street Road allowance. It so there are some encroachment provisions built into this agreement. I'll note that with respect to parking, council be aware that there were some emails that were circulating a little while ago related to parking. I think we've reached a point that we can, you know, say to Mr. Mills, okay, you can have, I think the number that we've arrived at, the the best-case scenario, that zoning would permit. And I I still think parking is, you know, something we need to pay attention to. But I think sixty occupants at any one time, sixty members of the public is pretty well the max you can get to with the parking available on this property. Based on the site plan, I believe Mr. Mills has seventeen parking spaces, including the existing parking space for one of the one of the semi-detached units. So, yeah, we're still working on some details with him, but in terms of the drawing, he has he has a designer that's working on the drawings on his behalf, and he's working on his building permit materials. So hopefully have him going on that building at some point in the near future. I think those are my comments. I'd be happy to answer any questions that council might have this time.
Sorry, it was on mute. Any questions or comments? Counselor Jamison.
I I'd just like to say good job because I know this has been has taken quite a while to get this this far. And so, yeah, I'm really happy to see this moving forward. Good job, Eric.
Thank you.
Reeve Emo.
If I can just add to that, it it's a it's a unique piece of property and the function that that is transforming to was not intended when it was built some hundred years ago. And so it it has its challenges to make it fit into the the fabric of the community. And so, yes, congratulations to you for making this making, you know, this work it, you know, because of the the space constraints. A question, the 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 angle parking on Gorman Street, is that something that can be included in it? Or is that sort of a known to be a relief for the property because it's there? Because otherwise, I don't think it would be those six or eight slots would be used on our on a daily basis anyway.
Through you, Mayor Edie, that's certainly certainly available for for the use of members of the public generally, right? So and you don't have a whole, you know, a whole heck of a lot with the exception of Adam Casper's ax vehicles, you know, I don't think you're going to have a whole lot of parking there in the evenings. It's not really an area where you have a lot of restaurants or anything like that. So I think it's, you know, there there is some on-street parking provided. That said, you know, I think the principle of of off-street parking provisions in the zoning bylaws, you don't want to have to rely on them. They're there if you need them. But we want really want to make sure that he's he's accommodating as much as possible on site.
I think Counselor Hines was next, and then back Reeve Emo.
Yeah, I just wanted to say thank you to the planning department and and say that the planning committee was very happy that this was coming forward to council. Certainly, it has the provision in there that the applicant must satisfy the requirements of the department. And and I know Eric and the planning department has been working with Mr. Mills on this, and it is nice to see that site developed into something. So full speed ahead.
Reeve Emo.
Yes, thank you. Just a supplementary to the planner, is there a is there a a planning vehicle or 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 policy that we might consider that would allow would allow us to to capture off-hour parking like that? Because as you noted, if there's functions there in the evenings or or on holidays, there aren't any restaurants or 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 a significant commercial demand at that end. Is that a is that something that in the future we might be able to to work out a formula that captures that? Because when we did a parking study, we found out that I think we had something like forty-two percent utilization. So for the whole for the whole of Ragland Street. So I think I think that's, you know, if there's a way of capturing that just as a relief or or at least an acknowledgement, it would be helpful. And then, thirdly, if I might, going down Ragland Street towards the towards the Swinging Bridge, there's an, you know, there's some some, I would think, parking on the right-hand side, too, that, you know, isn't utilized on a, sorry, on the western side, that that's not utilized on a regular basis. It might also be part of a, you know, a an expanded calculation.
Through you, Mayor Edie, if I may, just just for clarity, is it just just in regards to making sure that we have a good handle on the, as you as you noted, Reeve Emo, the utilization rate of off-street parking? And just making sure that we refresh that on a regular basis? Okay. Yeah, I think it's important to do that. You know, the downtown, in in just like in in many other municipalities, especially when you read, when you when you redevelop one, like Rentford has, you know, they are they are being redeveloped. And and, you know, you've got some prime sites in that part of town, near the Emblois factory. You've got, you've got the the old mill property. You've got you've got the one, the property that's just actually it'd be right across the street going to going to the west from the mill property. So I was trying to remember who owns that. Yeah, there there's a lot of, there's a lot of opportunity for redevelopment in that area. So and the redevelopment that's going to happen there is likely going to have some density to it. And so I think it's important, in particularly in that location, that we pay attention to utilization. I'm just looking at my zoning map on the wall. I think it's McGrimmons that owns it. It's 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 right on the river. It's a pretty big site. I think it's one forty-eight Argyle Street, or sorry, Lockhill Street. It's it's kind of going a little bit further west. It's a big site.
Any other questions or comments?
Director Askin wants to speak.
Okay, Director Askin?
Uh, yes, I was just going to add, in in this particular case, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, Eric, but the parking provided on-site does meet the requirements for the type of use that he's proposing. In developments where there is inadequate parking that they're able to achieve on-site, that it's usually there's a cash-in-lube policy that can be entered into its municipality, and and that that whole cash-in-lube is generally provided to, you know, to allow them to compensate with on-street parking for the lack of of parking being provided on their site. So definitely, there are other arrangements and other policies to take effect in the event that somebody can't provide sufficient parking.
At a further further date in time, if he decided to change the function and needed more parking, if he could come back to council, could he not, and ask for that provision?
Well, through you, Mayor Edie, so the so the thing with with the zoning is that you know, it the zoning doesn't do a really good job of limiting occupancy in this case. Because in all likelihood, the building code and the fire code are going to allow for a greater occupancy than you can accommodate with parking. So we built this limit into the site plan agreement. So I would say that to change it, he would need to come forward and amend his site plan to get that changed. It's not, I wouldn't say it's a conventional tool to to limit occupancy, but it's really the only tool that we have when you have when you have a building that it can accommodate, you know, more people than you have parking on a site. And then, yeah, for sure, if he wants more, if he wants more occupancy without providing more parking, council could put in place a cash-in-lube parking bylaw and then recover recover costs associated with providing off-street parking or, sorry, on-street parking elsewhere using those funds, and that would be the principle of that.
Okay, any other questions?
Treasurer O'Reilly has a raised hand.
All in favor. Sorry?
If I may, just if I may, just to clarify before we leave this top. Hello?
Yes, please.
If I may make a comment before before we leave this issue, the property that Planner Withers referred to at one forty-eight Lockhill Street is in fact owned by the Rentford Power Generation. If that's the correct, if we're talking about the one along the side of the river up Machinery Hill.
Okay.
Thank you. I'll defer to the treasurer on that one.
Okay, any further comments from anyone? Okay, hearing none, all in favor. Opposed. Carrie. I pretty well lost everybody on the screen now. You're probably punching some arrows here. See if I can get everybody back.
On your top right. Should see something called gallery view.
Looks like a Rubik's Cube.
Oh, God, I missed. I lost everybody. Except Reeve Emo.
So you're probably on speaker view, perhaps.
There you go. That's a nightmare.
Your top right corner of your screen, there should be some view options. Should say speaker view. You should be able to change that to.
Okay. Pretty well back to normal here. Okay, next motion. The bylaw thirty-three dash twenty twenty being the bylaw to authorize the mayor and clerk to execute a site plan agreement with U.S., U.K. Incorporated in relation to the property located at one eighteen Ryden Street North and eleven Bridge Street, rule number four seven four eight zero 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 dash zero eight zero dash zero five six zero zero. You read it first time and deemed to have been read a second time. Move her please. Counselor Jamison, second, please. Counselor Coolus. Any questions or comments? No questions or comments? Okay, all in favor. Opposed. Reeve Emo and Counselor Jamison are opposed?
No, I don't believe anyone is.
No, I was in favor.
All hands were.
I'm in favor.
When I said opposed, I seen your hands go up. Maybe the machine's working in slow motion. Okay, Carrie then. Okay, the bylaw thirty-three dash twenty twenty being a bylaw to authorize the mayor and clerk to execute a site plan agreement with U.S., U.K. Incorporated in relation to the property located at one eighteen Ryden Street North and eleven Bridge Street, rule number four seven four eight zero 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 dash eight zero zero times or dash eight dash zero eight zero dash zero five six zero zero. You read it third time and be passed. Move her please. Still waiting on him over. Counselor Coolus, second by Counselor Hines. Any any questions or comments? Counselor Hines. Counselor Hines, you're on mute.
Yeah, I just took you off.
Counselor Hines.
I am, but I don't have a question. I think it was Counsel Irvin's.
Okay. I don't know, machines going, it's funny, people put their hand up and it stays up forever or it disappears or?
Yeah, it's delayed. It looks delayed.
I guess so. Okay. I think I asked for all in favor, right?
Yes.
Yep.
Okay. Okay, next motion. That the minutes from the Human Resources Committee meeting held April twenty eighth, twenty twenty be received. Move her please. Counselor Jamison, second by. Counselor Jameson, second by, Count Revo. Before I turn it over to Revo for his report, uh. Just read this, please. It's a reminder note, when you come to the motion to receive the Human Resources Committee. Minutes and prior to the chair's summary, counsel, uh. Just want to remind counsel that concerning the occurrence during overtime and pandemic be dealt with by a separate motion. Though also that noting that the update on the status litigation involved in the fire chief. Former fire chief will be discussed by counsel and co-assessing leader that later this evening. And that the motion concerning senior management team. Will need to be advanced for further discussion at a future closed session. Where the practically ongoing municipal structure review. To deal with that at a future time, hopefully not too far down the road. So I'll turn it over to Revo for his report.
Uh, yeah, we met on, uh, April twenty eighth. It was a, yes? Yes, we met on April twenty eighth. Sorry, we met on April twenty eighth, and it looks like, uh, it's been decided not to deal with any of the matters, so that's the report.
Sorry, I can't hear this. All in favor? Opposed? Sorry, Counselor Heinz, do you have a question?
Yes, I do. Um. Are we not able to just review the minutes? Um. This is, uh, I mean, the recommendation in the, uh, agenda is to receive the report. Are we not able to do that and discuss that? Um. I mean, the committee is making some recommendations here, and I realize that we may have to. Uh, as a whole, counsel, discuss them, uh, but, um, I'm. I think it's important that we are reviewing what's in these minutes, and, um. I mean, my understanding is that we're in a, uh, under a, uh, state of emergency. Because of, uh, COVID nineteen and, uh, whatever. Motions that counsel feels appropriate, being one in regard to overtime, certainly needs some more discussion. But I think that the committee was certainly moving in the right direction when they did that. And, um, as far as the other issue, when it comes to the human resources. Um, are the Human Resources Committee recommending that, um. A member of counsel, Reeve Manor, in his absence, somebody from the committee would be part of the senior management. I think that does deserve some discussion, but I don't see a problem with receiving these minutes. So that we can move forward on the discussions of, of, uh, the recommendations from these committees. I mean, if we keep. Setting recommended.
Okay, but I could just answer that quickly. First of all, uh, there is a motion, separate motion. The next motion coming. And that's what I was trying to describe there, uh. The senior management team, uh, I think that's a whole different issue, uh, that would change our, uh. To, I believe, and I believe it's something that the whole senior managers, uh. Uh, maybe it'd have to be discussed during a further closed session. That we, uh, get together on that and. I tend to be calling, uh, committee, the whole meeting very shortly. Not the particular, and plus some other ones, so that's why then, then, then the decisions have been deferred. Uh, except while it's not deferred, the one on, uh, the overtime, it's just that one. So we can't have a discussion on that. Yes, Revo then.
I'm, I'm surprised, hadn't heard anything about. Sorry?
We're having some significant.
I have to say, I'm surprised because I didn't hear anything about this. The package is. Oh, sorry. Okay.
Okay, I'm not seeing, I'm not seeing anybody. If it, if anyone wants to speak, please put up your hand and we'll start over again.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Did you hear what I said there? So if anyone wants to speak now, please put up your hand. Okay, Counselor Jameson? Counselor Jameson?
I want to hear what Peter has to say. I want to hear what Peter has to say.
Okay, I already asked me other key comments. I haven't heard, heard from him yet. We're having an awful time communicating here. I'm sorry. I'm not trying to, uh. Never, I don't know, can anybody hear me talking right now?
Yes, and Peter had his hand up. Yes, Peter's got his hand up, Don.
I, I don't know, I understand that, and I spoke back to it. Obviously, he's not hearing me. And Counselor Heinz is not hearing me when I spoke back to her. I don't know. Can anybody hear me right now? If any, everybody can hear me, please put up your hand. I hear, I see. Okay, it seems to be delayed. That seems to be the problem. Okay, everybody's got their hand up, so you've, you've heard me. So I understand now, maybe this thing has just been delayed, so I gotta wait a wee bit longer. After I speak. Okay, Revo.
Thank you. Um. I, I wasn't aware that this, both of those motions were going to be, uh. I, I guess the first one was a second, you know, the, the overtime, uh, it was gonna be a separate vote, okay? I wasn't aware the other one was gonna be pulled from the agenda, so I, I find that unusual, but that's, again, something you'll have to deal with. Um, I can just say with regards to the senior management team, uh. Uh, motion, it was a discussion by committee that was brought back out and opened, so that would be, uh, transparent to everyone. And, um, all, all the committee members, uh. And myself have all heard from various members of council, uh, at times within the last four to six months, asking for. Some kind of, uh, movement on the ability of council to participate with senior management at their, at their meetings. And I, and I believe that this motion reflects that. However, I do look forward to, uh, a future discussion on it. It'd be quite interesting to see if. If everyone remembers those conversations they've had.
Okay, having said that, I understand where you're coming from. And we will have a meeting on this for sure, and I think all senior managers, managers have to be in the room at the same time. As well as all council members. And I think we'll have a real good thorough discussion on it. Okay. Anything else on this? Hearing nothing. Okay.
Your worship. Okay, I go back to my point. Uh, in the agenda, we are just receiving the minutes. And when we receive the minutes, we usually have a review from the chairman, which I would. Hope that we could still do, and then we move forward with whatever comes out of that meeting. Um, otherwise, we're, what are we doing with this? Are we receiving it, or? Doesn't make sense to set aside when we have a motion coming out of it in regard to the overtime. A bit of point of order there.
Okay, for receiving it? Sorry?
Is there a fear if we receive it, that these are, uh, set in stone? I don't think so. When we're bringing motions forward and we're saying that we're going to discuss things further, but I still. Think that it's important that the chair, sorry, Peter, but that you review the contents of this meeting.
Sure.
Well, the only thing that he hasn't reviewed so far, basically, is, uh, beautification, uh, paragraph B. The motion for overtime will be a further discussion. Which is the next motion on the table. The other one we've talked about that we're going to go into a closed session of a later time with everybody present to discuss that one. Really, the only thing that hasn't been talked about that I can see on here, uh, would be, uh, beautification.
And the municipal structure review, just an update on that. Uh, I'm just. I'm just at the point where I'm just saying that if we're receiving this and we want the public to know what's happened in this meeting. And I understand that we're moving forward on other motions that deal with this, but, uh, I don't. Think that we should just be setting reports aside just because we don't want to deal with that at the moment.
Well, as far as I'm concerned, we're receiving, we're receiving the report. With the changes that we've said, like, uh, we pulled the two things, one about the fire chief. We pulled that out, and we pulled, and it's going into post-session tonight. We pulled the other one out for overtime. The only one we didn't, that we, it's not gonna be talked about any further, is the one on going into, uh. With the senior management team, which needs to be discussed an awful lot before it comes to the council table. This particular time, so I think this report's been already reported. I don't think there's anything else to report on it. That's Revo, do you want to last?
Uh, no, I'm, uh, just thoroughly confused, so I think, uh, you know, it's best, I'm gonna sit and think for a few minutes, and if I have something. I'll bring it up later on.
Okay. Okay, then. Like, we have to have a vote on this, do anybody in favor of receiving the minutes? Yeah.
I guess I've read them myself, so.
You see two hands up?
All right.
Anybody opposed to receiving? Okay, Kirk Bulmer, did you get a count on that bench outside?
Three opposed and four in favor. Are you in favor yourself of receiving, Mary Dee?
Yep.
Yes, I am.
There'll be four in favor, three opposed.
It's Carrie then. Okay. Okay. Next motion, that the Rentford Town Council approved the following motion of the Human Resources Committee. That no overtime should be incurred either by nor paid for duration of COVID nineteen pandemic necessitated. Over, please. Revo, second by. Counselor Sidney. Again, any further discussion on this? Counselor Heinz?
Um, I just think that, um, sorry, I don't mean to be barking up the same tree, but if we had reviewed the minutes. We would have known, uh, the reasoning behind this, that the Human Resources Committee saw that, uh. Because of COVID nineteen and where our community's at, and, um, that we have chose not to. Lay off anyone else like other communities have, and, um, that. I see this, and I'd like to hear from the Human Resources Committee, but, um, you know, in regard to other town employees who have. Had their businesses closed and not able to function at all. I think this is not a bad thing to ask. And it is in, uh, the time we're in right now, which is, uh, COVID nineteen. Uh, pandemic emergency, um. So, uh, that's just my comment on it, but I would really, uh, I've read what it's in the minutes here. Uh, but I would love to hear from the, um. Human Resources Committee in regard to their reasoning. I mean, it's somewhat captured in the minutes, but, my sake.
Okay, uh, that's why this motion is on the table, and, uh, and when it's on the Human Resources Committee is here to explain it. Revo has his hand up, so please proceed.
Yes, thank you, and to, through you, uh, your worship to Counselor Heinz, uh, the committee, uh, talked about this at some length, uh. And as you say, we, we had recognized quite early in. In this, uh, emergency that, uh, the town has an important role in our local economy by, uh, with over five million dollars in, in, uh, payroll that. We think our community depends upon at this point, um, to continue to meet their own bills through our purchases, uh, that our employees make. But also the, uh, purchases of the corporation. And, uh, with that, though, we thought there was some added responsibility, um, to ensure that, uh, with the flexibility. Flexibility that's been afforded our employees, and we're grateful for them to, you know, that they have, uh, stepped up. Continued to function and perform their tasks, um, whether at home or coming in at, at different times, and so that often means. They've had to make some changes in their, uh, in their childcare and, and some of their other responsibilities, but they've done that willingly. But at the same time, we felt there was a responsibility to ensure, because of that added flexibility that's in their work schedules now. And, and the ability to work from home, that there wouldn't be a need short of an emergency. We recognize that sometimes our departments have emergencies, uh, that are. Are that are the result of continuing operations for the municipality, um, that the time. For our employees to work could be managed, and, uh, we would expect them to use that flexibility. Should you have to work extra time on one day or two days to take additional time off, uh. Down the road, down the road, meaning within the, uh, within, within the meaning, the legislated time, uh, to take the time off. So, we have. Uh, confidence that this can be managed, and we just wanted to point it out, and we felt that the motion was the best way to point it out. And to, uh, to send the positive message about our appreciation, but also the message about our expectation about managing time properly.
Okay, Counselor Sidney?
Um, yeah, I, I sit on the Human Resources Committee as well, um, not to, uh. You know, repeat what, uh, Revo said, but, uh, I think. One of the things that came up from that, the meeting and the discussion is, you know, we are in uncharted waters here with COVID nineteen, and. You know, we do know the impact that it's having on our municipality, on our business owners, on our, um, residents. Uh, the financial impact is, is great, um, we don't even know what the long-term effects are gonna be from this, and I think as a municipality, and as a leader in the community. I think we need to do our fiscal responsibility to try and eliminate as much, um, over cost as we can, and, uh. You know, as Revo said, we've been pretty flexible in the, the working environments and how they can, uh, flex schedules and stuff, and. Um, I think this is just an opportunity for, um, the town of Brentford to, again, recognize their employees, but at the same time. Uh, be accountable to the citizens of Brentford to say, you know what? We recognize that these are difficult times. We recognize that quite a few members of our community are, are in financial. Difficulties right now, excuse me, and it would just be, uh, a good, uh. A good positive approach for the town to recognize the fact that, um, we are going to try and eliminate and limit overtime as much as possible.
Any other comments? Okay, hearing none. I'd just like to say this, if I could. I brought up probably about a good month, five weeks ago, asked all department heads to review what they were doing as far as their budget went, as far as their operations went, et cetera. And of course, that would include anything to do with overtime. I do think that at this particular time, that this is not a bad motion. Now, we have to understand, we all have to understand that that would require overtime, whatever them circumstances may be, and possibly an explanation should come from the department head if something does occur. But other than that, I have no other comments on it. Hearing nothing, all in favor? Seeing two hands. All in favor? Okay, anybody opposed? Carrie. Okay. The next minutes, that the minutes from the Waste Management Committee meeting held April 27, 2020 be received. A mover please. Revo, second to five. Counselor Sidney. Turn it over to Revo for his report.
Thank you, your worship. We met on April 27th, as you can see, and I'll move you right down to item number six. And again, talking about the blue box resolution that Amos expecting about the deadline of June 30th. And we suspect we're going to go with an earlier transition, but we're going to have staff work with Aron Pryor and McNabb Brayside and to create a joint report so that all three corporations are operating on the same information at the same time. The transition to producer responsibility will be painful. But, you know, we, we've confidence that with some time, we can make it work. There was the, and if you turn over the page, there, we talked about the batteries. I mentioned that in the last, in our last meeting to you, we're updating you. Batteries are transitioning on July the first to a new company. The products that are going to be collected, there's still some holes for us. The large batteries, larger batteries over five kilograms and batteries that are, that come with your, your tools are just two that we're aware of, that don't seem to have a home yet, or it's unclear. So you see the motion about batteries. And then I'll move, again, we, we had gone through the, the resource and productivity and recovery authority presentation. And we noted a couple of sections where they talked about audits. We'd like to get copies of those audits of what they're doing with the, with the batteries and then also how our community stacks up with other communities. So there's a direction there as well. And then we moved to new and unfinished business, which was landfill. And again, the discussion was about opening and how we're going to do that. I can say to you that we're open today. There were approximately 130 people attended the landfill today. That's up from normally about 70 at this time of year. And it seemed, it seemed to go very well. I was over and had a look on three different occasions and things seem to be moving rather smoothly. You'll note at the bottom of page two, decrease in, in revenue. We're not sure what that means in terms of for the full year, we'll move more in a, in a couple more months. It's, it's down, but it's not alarming. And so if you move down to midway through page three, one of the things we talked about was, was the use of volunteer firemen for traffic control on Bruce Street during the first few days. It doesn't look like we're going to need that on, on the basis of today, and I, and I don't think that was successful anyway. But we were trying to find different measures to, to address the traffic on Bruce Street because we thought there'd be a lot of people and also on site. So then moving over to page four, you'll see that we had staff to provide a reported emergency, emergency control group with our reopening date. Eight point two, the RFQ for processing, there were two bids, one from Intera and the other from GFL, Green for Life. Green for Life didn't provide enough information and so Intera is likely to be the, likely be, who will be chosen, but we'll move more down the road. Financial report. We asked staff to provide a forecasted revenue projection for 2020. And we'll bring that to the next meeting. So with that, that was the basis for our meeting. The primary focus was on getting the site open and that has happened and we're, I think, quite pleased. I would venture in speaking for the committee, we're quite pleased with how it went today.
Any questions or comments? Counselor Colas and Counselor Davison.
Through you, your worship, kudos to you, Peter, and your, and your management committee, Waste Management Committee. There's been a lot of concern about these landfill sites being closed in the area and a lot of people have asked why and all that sort of thing. And, and of course, our main concern, I guess, leading up to today was how do we control the crowds that ultimately we'll have to deal with? And it sounds like it went very, very well, which, which again, the waste people at landfill should be congratulated on the way they handled things. And I'm sure over the next few days, we're going to go crazy with, with steady stream and possibly get our revenue back to where we can actually justify the expense of that, of that landfill. So thanks for that.
Counselor Davison.
Yeah, Peter, can you, do you know, well, hopefully you know, do you know when the date, the start date is that we're looking at to have the contract start? Like whoever is successful, whether it's Intera or the other company, do we have a, do we have a firm start date for recycling? For our new recycling program?
No. No, through you, your worship, thank you. The Intera is processing and we still have to put together the, put together the RFP for the trucking part of it. The numbers that Intera provided are very competitive to what we're currently paying. And, you know, I think it's going to provide some of the budgetary relief, you know, when we, when we did the budget, we were quite worried about some of the numbers being quite high. So we, we think it's not going to be quite as bad as it was. So likely Intera will do the processing. We're in the process now of doing, of putting together the tender for the trucking and the pickup. And so that we'll know that we're, we're still pretty confident that the new contract should be in place sometime in June or July at the latest and, and then we'll go forward. And if I might respond to Counselor Colas, the, the closure was primarily the result of the, of the provincial order and emergency order and the accompanying regulations about non-essential travel and more than five people. So those were the things that we had to wade our way through. And so part of what we did was try and read where the province was going to be. And so we read correctly that the province was going to be this week, starting to, to look for periods of normal business or reasonably normal business. So we were quite successful in looking forward and picking this date. We picked the date about three and a half weeks ago and I've worked towards it and the province, unbeknownst to us, got to the same date at the right time. So it was a series of happy coincidences, but we, we plan to be ready as soon as they were ready.
Great.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing none. I'd just like to say that being paired with the committee with Counselor Sidney, myself and Revo, there's been a lot of discussion on this particular topic. I also drove out there today only once, went out this morning about 11:30. The town had some signs up, just going out of town, looked like men working signs. And then at the top of the hill, there was another sign there, men working. And I observed, just watching people coming over the hill, but as soon as they seen that sign, they slowed down. So the method, that method seemed to work very well. So I have to say thank you to the public works through Mr. Armstrong, looks after this, good job done. All in favor? Opposed? No, okay, I got everybody on the screen now. Thank you. Carrie. Okay, the Director Austin's report dated May the 7th, 2020, concerning award of tender for Empire Ross reconstruction be received. Mover please. Counselor Colas, second to five. Counselor Hines, or Counselor Evans, sorry. I'd asked if Director Aston could give us a report on this.
Sure can, and thank you, Mayor Edie and counsel. This tender is the first tender for the construction in 2020. The documents were prepared and released in March and tenders closed in April 28. And there were a total of four bidders and the, the project values submitted by the bidders were very, very tight. They were from 934,765 to $1,153,000. So they're very, very tight bidding. The, the overall project cost was about 10 to 15% higher than the prices we've experienced in previous years. And, you know, in this situation, we're not, not certain what the cause is, could be market, could be partially COVID related. It's noted in the financial that when we did prepare the budget, there were no taxation funds assigned from, for the road portions of the project. Fortunately, there are funds from the OSF formula-based funding that, that were provided to the town for infrastructure projects in 2020 that were not assigned to any other project. So the, the funding that's been presented in the financial portion equates to 558,345 from provincial and federal governments. There's $120,000 from the wastewater, from the water fund for water system improvements. $62,700 in wastewater funding for sewer works. The provincial formula-based funding component is 108,392. And the funds that are required from taxation to support the project is $76,371. So, so that is a very good leverage of taxation dollars for a project worth 925,809. So the low tender was submitted by BEI and the tenders, all tenders were evaluated by JP2G as well as the town and checked for math and completeness. And based on the submissions, we're recommending award to BEI to begin construction as soon as the award is provided. The, I guess the options we presented in the report are not to award, to modify the project to try to reduce the cost or to award the full project. Not to award, I believe, would, would give away essentially the half a million dollars in, in provincial and federal funding. So we're not recommending that option. The option to reduce the scope of the work would mean that we would not benefit from water system connections between Queen Street and Bank Street, which is required for circulation purposes. So we're, we're not recommending that the project be cut back because we wouldn't see the full benefit of the, of the project for underground works. So option three to award the project to BEI is the option that we're recommending to counsel.
Any questions or comments? Counselor Sidney.
Yeah, Director, I'm just wondering, does this also include the costing for engineering and stuff?
Yeah, the, the 925,809 is the full cost of construction and engineering and project signs and, and the total project cost.
Now, if I could have one more question. Because like $77,000 is a lot of money when it's not, like, but whatever the reason is for it. But is there a way that, I don't know, like, how do we recoup that extra $77,000?
Well, the, the $77,000 is really the only money coming from taxation towards the project. So the, the portions of the project that even the ineligible costs that are not eligible for grant portions are, if you look in appendix B, there's $188,000 of, of costs in there that, that are not eligible for any, any kind of grant portion. So the $76,000 is felt, that's essentially project funding from the province and feds of 82% of the whole project cost. So that's very, very good leverage for an infrastructure project.
Any other questions or comments? Revo.
Yes, just wondering, I, I don't recall, but I don't think we have a policy that, that doesn't allow us to deal with people who are in dispute with. I know some corporations have that if they're in a dispute with somebody, they can't award a tender. I, to the director, I don't believe we have that policy in place, do we?
Yes, all the tenders that we do have indicate there's clauses in there that if we're, if we have an existing claim from a contractor, like a formal claim, then we can disqualify that contractor. At this point, we do not have any, any formal claims from this contractor. There's, there's disputes, which is not, doesn't fit the, the character of that particular paragraph. There has to be kind of a legal claim submitted. So at this point, we're still hopeful that we'll avoid claims and, and work with contractors to, to resolve any disputes that are out there.
Okay, thank you, I just remembered something.
Revo.
No, no, thank you, no, I, I just was saying, I thought I'd remembered that we had that policy, but now it's been clarified for me.
Okay, any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor? Carrie. Okay. The bylaw 35-2020 being a bylaw to authorize the mayor and clerk to execute an agreement with Vulture Excavating Incorporated, BEI, for the reconstruction of Empire Ross Street. You read it first time and deemed to been read a second time. Mover please. Counselor Colas, second or please. Still need a second or?
And your evidence is waving his hand, your worship.
Okay, Counselor Evans, any questions or comments on this? I wish I could see everybody at all at the same time. It seems if somebody could, when the Director Aspin came in and gave his report, then I lost Counselor Evans. No questions or comments? All in favor? Hey, Counselor Evans, are you in favor?
Yes, he is.
Favor.
Carrie. The bylaw thirty-five dash twenty twenty being the bylaw to authorize the mayor and clerk to execute an agreement with Vulture Excavating Incorporated, BEI, for the reconstruction of Empire Ross Street. We read it a third time and be passed. Move her please. Counselor Colas, seconded by?
Counsel, Counselor Evans, again, it's waving his hand.
Counselor Evans.
Pick me, pick me.
Any further questions or comments? All in favor? There he is.
Counselor Evans is feeling neglected.
Counselor Jamison in favor?
What?
Waiting for you to put up your hand. Are you opposed?
Who?
You haven't put up your hand yet. Are you in favor or opposed?
Who are you talking to, voting on this now? You.
Okay, all in favor, Carrie. Okay. We're now going to go into closed session. Does anybody want to take a break for five minutes?
Yeah.
Yes, please.
Yes, I gotta get a drink of water.
Reconvene at eight?
Could we?
Reconvene at eight twenty.
Here, Edie, do we read the closed session motion first? So after that, I'll stop recording, pause recording.
Okay, all ready? The Brentford Town Council convened in closed session for the following matter pursuant to section two thirty-five of Municipal Act two thousand and one. Concerned to section two thirty-nine, two C of Municipal Act two thousand and one, a proposed or pending acquisition or disposa- disposition of land by the municipality or local board. More specifically, to discuss lands requiring the future facility development. Pursuant to section two thirty-nine, two E of the Municipal Act two thousand and one, litigation or potential litigation, including matters before administrative, administrative tribunals affecting municipality or local board. More specifically, this discussed matters pertaining to the former fire chief and also management operation of Rentru Innovation Center. Move her please. Counselor Jamison, seconded by Counselor Colas. We're now in close, we'll take a five minute recess and we reconvene about twenty-two minutes after.
Hey, the recording has resumed.
Okay, I just want to go back to new and unfinished business. I did have one thing that I wanted to mention. This is National Nurses Week. And due to what's going on in the world right now, I'd like to say on behalf of the town of Rentru that we recognize all our nurses and certainly give them our support as to what they're doing these days. It's not, it's not a good time for them. So anyway, that's, I just think from the town's point of view, we we certainly appreciate everything they're doing. And, you know, I I talked to quite a lot of them and some of them are really nervous about going to work. I have a daughter that's a nurse and, believe me, she she's into the thick of it and whatever, it's not a, it's not a nice situation. And so you got to appreciate what they're doing and the bravery. So on behalf of the town, I have to salute them. For any other, any other new or unfinished business? Reeve Emo.
Yes, just to tidy something up that's been bothering me a little bit. Under, I'd like to make a motion under section twenty point one of procedural bylaw for a suspension of the rules and and recommend that Reeve Emo or in his absence, another member of the Human Resources Committee attend all senior management team meetings going forward. I'd like to make that motion, I, because I don't understand why it has to go to closed.
Okay, there's a motion on the table. Obviously, we'll have a second or? Okay, Counselor Jamison. Okay, any further discussion? You're on mute, Andrew.
What would be the the purpose of that, Peter? So just to describe it to us? The reasons, sorry, rationale behind it?
It was, it was a motion that was passed at committee and I I don't, it was passed in open as far as that committee and I bring it forward and open in this meeting. Using the procedural bylaws that's meant to be used.
But I get my point more, my question would be then, for what reason would would we want to consider having a member of council sitting at the senior board meeting?
I'm sorry, I'm I'll only speak for myself, but I've I've heard from a number of members of council that they would like more information about what occurs at at senior management and also to have councils view reflected in some of the discussions, ongoing discussions and and plans moving forward. You know, in in the absence of a strategic plan, you know, that plans and projects are brought forward that sometimes need a great deal of explanation to see how they fit into an overall vision. And some members of council have expressed to me, and I believe to other members of the HR committee, that they would like to see a little more marriage of ideas and vision between council and the senior management team.
Any other discussion?
I think it's a great idea.
Have you, have you spoke to all the senior managers before you made this decision?
Me? No, I have, no, I haven't spoke to any senior manager specifically about this decision, no. It was, as I said, it was, it was council.
So it was three committee members that made this decision?
Made the recommendation and council would make the decision, yes. As as the, as committee works.
Okay, Treasury O'Reilly.
Guess on behalf of the senior management team is the representative from the council then becoming the de facto CAO to attend a staff meeting that deals with operational issues.
Reeve Emo.
No.
Then I frankly don't understand the need for it.
If I might, the I think council has suggested in in the past through to me and I guess through me that they wanted to ensure that there was some council vision and or influence brought into management, senior management recommendations or plans going forward.
Okay, any other senior manager want to jump in on this?
I'll, I'll speak real quickly. I I think, you know, the way I seen it, I seen, you know, a motion, you know, the mayor, Edie, asked me what I thought. I seen a motion that came out of a closed session in a committee being voted on in open session. So for council, how could they discuss a closed session item and get, get the context of HR's closed session discussion in order to vote on an o- on an open item like we're doing right now? You know, if it's a closed session committee discussion, it should be a closed session council discussion. How can you, how can the committee take what their rationale in closed session, bring it in the open and tell council to to address it?
Reeve Emo.
I I recognize that, but I also recognize that if I was to go through our minutes, I'm sure I could find any number of instances where there's been a discussion enclosed and then subsequently a motion passed outside of it, which captured the intent of the discussion, if, but not the content. And I think if you will look at that, that's what this is.
Chief Welsh, should you have anything to say?
I I guess my question is based on, I have not seen the agenda and I apologize for not having done that research, but did the agenda that was put out for the HR committee meeting specify that this was going to be a topic dealt with enclosed that gave all of council the opportunity to express their position as you have related to during that meeting that was held that this motion flowed from?
Reeve Emo.
No, as I do not see the agenda for your meetings or anybody else's meetings with the opportunity for me to to offer discussion or input until it comes to council. So that would be quite a, quite a leap in logic to suddenly apply that to this decision respectfully.
So the public displayed agenda as all committee members have didn't include that. It's publicly posted forty-eight hours before the meeting, so I just wondered.
Uh, no, it was on the, it was on the agenda.
Okay, Director Aspin, then Treasury O'Reilly.
Yes, and and I I can see the the rationale that that Counselor Reeve Emo is presenting is that he doesn't appear to think that the senior managers are considering the, you know, the vision and direction of council. And there's probably lots of opportunities to to go back into the existing structure that's there to crystallize what the council's, you know, direction is and what their strategic direction is for the corporation. And then, then meet with the senior managers. We we do go through a budget process. We have each committees to raise specific issues. I think it's a matter of just all council and senior managers meeting to kind of crystallize what are, what are the particular issues that they feel are important that are not being advanced, that should be advanced. So there's probably mechanisms other than having somebody become part of the senior management team from council that is is likely contrary to the provisions of the procedural bylaw, the way it's written as far as senior managers reporting directly to council.
Okay, Treasury O'Reilly.
Basically the same thing, we're just that, Mike, Mike summarized it better than I could have.
Okay, Director Hill.
I I don't, I got to be honest with you, I don't see a problem with it. If all, all of council wants to attend our senior management meetings, we keep minutes or notes and we, I I have no problem with it whatsoever.
Treasury O'Reilly.
On that, I I think I would add then that the reason for that comment is that as managers, as senior managers, I guess what we deal with on a regular basis are issues that belong to a council member and not council. And the frustration is clear goals and objectives and plans of council and not a council member. So I'm also not aware of any particular performance issues that have ever been brought to to my attention or the attention of any of my, my fellow senior managers as far as the functioning of the senior management team. However, having stated that, we are currently in the midst of a review of the entire organization. And if, at the end of that review, it could very well be that we end up with a CAO model versus the current model. But that is probably just a couple of months down the road, so it's up to council what they want.
Okay, Counselor Evans and Counselor Jamison.
I think this, this point that I'm going to mention is probably very prevalent. In the past, have any of the counselors that I'm looking at right now requested a copy of the minutes of the senior management team? And been denied or requested anyways? So why start now?
Counselor Jamison.
Okay, so I remember being asked to attend a senior manager meeting one time back in the last term when we had an employee, Kim Beach, who was, she was under contract as an EDO and all senior managers had had wanted me there to attend so that they could, they could tell some, they could tell me everything that she was doing wrong and what they didn't like. And and, you know, just, just, it was just like, you know, get off their chest some of the things that she was doing. So, I mean, for me, I don't see the problem in in a counselor sitting around in a senior management team, especially since we're looking at possibly moving forward to a CAO. Because for me, it's like, we have to have a better understanding of how everything functions together.
If I could just jump in and I'm this is probably why this discussion should be in closed session, not in open. I think there's some comments that have probably went beyond the the boundaries of what should be discussed. I think council's putting themselves possibly in a precarious situation. We are recording this meeting. I'm just giving guidance that you know, I'm just giving some guidance and suggestions, certainly up to you is what discussion you'd like to have in in the open session.
So the answer was nobody's ever asked before? Okay.
Director Aspin. You're on mute.
And and I think there's always been opportunities for any council member or counselor, mayor to attend as a delegation of the senior managers to express any opinions or 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 discuss, you know, different, different issues that may occur. So there's lots of opportunities for communication.
Your worship?
Yes.
Would it, would it help if the senior managers were to offer their agenda to members of council? I mean, how would we ever know to attend if we didn't know what was being discussed? I mean, only Kim hails from the past when we used to have a copy of the senior manager's agenda and whoever was the chair of the day or however you organize it, they would review that at the committee of the whole with with all of council. I mean, it was a kind of a, a no mind thing and I I hate seeing us, I I dislike, excuse me, I dislike seeing us in this push and pull situation. Yeah, I mean, I have had a discussion today with Chief Welsh in regard to his concern with this and and I was very open with him about what I thought about it. I didn't see such a of them and us situation and I I really would hate to, I would dislike to see that happening between the senior managers that we have today and the members of council. And I just, I have a little bit of a hard time understanding what the problem with that would be, but I I don't want to second guess any one of you.
Okay. Reeve Emo.
Yes, and just to be clear, I, you know, the intent was to reflect the conversations I've had with council. This has been, members of council on a number of occasions in the past six months specifically, but before that as well, some of the questions they've raised. And it shouldn't be seen as a reflection other than that. Now, having said that, in following the advice of of Clerk Bulmer, perhaps what I would suggest is that I would be perhaps what I would suggest is that I would be willing, you know, at the second or would be to table this until the next meeting with the understanding that possibly we should have a closed session and a very frank airing of what everybody thinks is going on, I might be unaware, I might be unaware of some of the things that are going on.
Counselor Sedgley.
No, I I think that would be a good idea to table it and bring it up in closed next council meeting.
Okay. So we take it to another council meeting, and I'm fine with that, that's what I suggested originally, that we do that and possibly take it into closed. Now, there's got to be a reason why this is happening. So is everybody gonna bring their knives to the table and throw it all over on the table so we get this thing done once and for all?
I'm bringing a gun.
These things just don't do things that just don't happen, they just don't happen. You know, I I've got along with the senior managers now for going on six years, I've never had a problem. If I had a question, I went to any one of them and asked the question. And whatever, and I was always, I was never treated badly. Every time I asked a question, I could do it, and every council member has the same option. You go and talk to any senior manager at any time you want. I've been to a couple of senior management's team meetings. I asked to be put on the agenda, and I was. Can't remember what it was about now, a few years ago, but anyway, I'm just saying, I I would prefer to take it to another closed session sometime, but, you know, bring this thing to a head and get it over with. Reveemo.
Certainly, there's not, was, to my understanding, there's nothing, there's nothing to bring to a head. It was a, it was a, you know, a series of conversations about about it, and I think I encapsulated it. And just a question for Clerk Bulmer, when we say table, it's to the next meeting, then it's brought off the table as opposed to sometime in the future? Is that my understanding of procedural bylaw?
Yeah, it's certainly look for if that's the direction I'm hearing is that would be at the next opportune, at the next scheduled closed session, which unless it's special, will be scheduled for after the May twentieth, as part of the May twenty sixth council meeting.
Okay, thank you, that's that was my understanding when I made the suggestion about tabling it.
Okay. Do we have a motion on the table then, Peter, or you?
Yeah, yes, I made I made that motion to table this and and take it to closed at the next available council meeting.
Okay, somebody want a second? Okay. Counselor Heinz, sorry. Any further discussion on it? All in favor? Okay, you're all in favor?
Yeah.
Terry. Okay. Was there anything else for new and unfinished business? That heard work, okay. The Bylaw thirty six dash twenty twenty being a bylaw to confirm the proceedings of the council Carcass and Town Run for the meeting held May the twelfth, twenty twenty, be read a first time and deemed to have been read a second time. Mover please. We are mayor, Counselor Heinz, second by? Counselor Evans. All in favor? Terry. The Bylaw thirty six dash twenty twenty being a bylaw to confirm the proceedings, the council, the Carcass and Town Run through at the meeting held May the twelfth, twenty twenty, be read a third time and be passed. Mover please. Counselor Sedgley, second by. Counselor Evans, all in favor? We now adjourned, it is ten twenty two. Okay, have a good evening.